The meeting to order. And we'd love to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the public for which it stands. A nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hey, our next order of business is to adopt the agenda for tonight's regular board meeting. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move that we adopt the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Adopted. We have some special recognition tonight. We have a proclamation for Disability Awareness Month of October. I'll turn this over to...
I didn't know that we were providing information or just reading the proclamation.
Okay, we can do that. So I've asked Director Bookenegre to please read the proclamation, please.
Thank you. Proclamation Disability Awareness Month, October 2017. Whereas workplaces are welcoming of all talents of all people, including people with disabilities, which are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy. Whereas the Evergreen Public Schools is recognizing Disability Awareness Month this October to raise awareness about disability employment issues and celebrate the many and varied contributions of peoples with disabilities. Whereas activities during this month will reinforce the value and talent people with disabilities adds to our workplaces and communities and affirm Evergreen Public Schools' commitment to an inclusive community. Therefore, be it resolved that the Evergreen School Board does hereby proclaim October 2017 as Disability Awareness Month. In so doing, call upon employers, schools, and other community organizations to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities and to advance its important message that people with disabilities are equal to the task throughout the year. And it's signed by our President, Victoria Bradford.
Is that someone, Sidney?
Mono Jay.
Somebody needs to take the... Yes, absolutely.
Jay, if you could use the mic, then the people who watch this on video can hear these too.
I can imagine, this is my favorite thing to do. Amber Lindley, Barb Lorenzo's back there, and Holly Long. All of these folks work tirelessly daily to support students with disabilities, staff, and families of students with disabilities. Just wanted them to be recognized as well for this month, so.
Thank you.
I would like to add to that, that having come to this district three years ago, I have never seen a district so committed to inclusion in all of the districts I've been associated with. This is really a lighthouse to the state and even the nation on what we do for kids. OSPI refers districts to come visit our programs to see what we do to make sure that every student is involved in the least restrictive environment and in the general classroom as much as possible. And it starts with the board philosophy, to the administration's commitment, and the staff that actually put that into action every single day in every single classroom in this district. And I don't take any credit for this, but I would say Evergreen's community should be extremely proud of the efforts that this district takes.
And I want to echo that, because I've watched over the years how it's evolved. And, you know, every single situation is special and has its own unique challenges, opportunities. And so I appreciate all of your hard work in trying to find the right situation for every student. So thank you for everything you're doing for us.
I'd also like to mention too, that, because I think about our transition program at Crestwood and the fantastic employers that work with us to make sure that our students can transition to a workplace environment. And there are so many fantastic employees that we've seen that have helped our students.
Okay. Next up, we are going to be monitoring district operations. And tonight, we have a second reading for our operational expectations, OE5, financial planning. Again, this is a second reading, and I'd like to turn... Let's see here. I'll check something here really quick. So we had a workshop on this. We had a first reading at the last board meeting, where the members of the board have received the superintendent's reasonable interpretation of the board's policy, what the indicators are, and the monitoring reports on what we'll be doing in that regard, having to do with financial planning. And it's now the board's responsibility to consider or report as evidence of reasonable organizational compliance in this area. So if I can turn things over to Dr. Stich for a short report on this second reading.
Yep. As a second reading, I'm not going to go through all the detail. We went through this in extreme detail at the last meeting. And I haven't received any comments from anyone on this for desired changes. Just as a brief summary, this is our financial planning, operational expectations from the board. And in response to this, the district will be preparing a variety of additional executive summary reports to accompany the budget document each year. I met with Mike Merlino and Bruce Nashif last week, and we started to outline exactly what those documents were going to look like. We anticipate having a draft of those in the next couple of weeks. And we will plan to bring this back to the board for official monitoring approval once we get those reports generated. You'll get a three-year look of the main spending areas. You'll get a crosscut of the budget aligned to the operational expectations and the results policies. You'll get a list of assumptions. You'll get a breakdown on all of the calculus... Basis of all the calculations for increasing all of our expenditures, as well as all of our revenues. So that'll give you more of the overall basis for the budget, in addition to all the detail that you're used to receiving. So with that, I would ask at this time that the board accept the reasonable interpretation indicators for operational expectation OE5, and that the reports be adopted as presented for second reading and adoption.
At this time, I'm going to call for any questions or comments by the audience regarding this particular policy, or anyone who'd like to address the board. So I'd like to call for a motion.
All right. I move that the board accept the superintendent's reasonable interpretation indicators and monitoring report for operational expectations OE5, financial planning, as presented for second reading and adoption.
Second that.
Sorry.
I second that.
I'd like to open it up for any questions or comments by the board before taking a vote.
I don't have any further questions.
So, like I said last time, this is the one that has the sentence about OSPI and the difficulty that people have reading the formats of those reports. This document is so much clearer than anything as a meta-document about what we're going to say about the budget for the public and for the board. And it occurs to me it could become modeled that the state could use to change its formats.
Other than I would suggest you take out the four-year projection unless they actually have legitimate four-year revenue projections.
Yeah.
Well, you know, as formats go, that's yes. And I'm really pleased at how clear this is. And I'm really looking forward to the documents that you and the others produce about it.
And my comment along the lines of a model, I think, and we talked about this last time as well, but being able to figure out what we want to do as a district in terms of results for our students, and what you're talking about here is to really directly tie our budget to those results. You know, it'll be a model for having such a tight, direct linkage, you know, that I've never seen before. So I'm looking forward to it as well.
You know, one of the discussions we were having is where to put teacher salaries in this, because they are... It is funding or expenditures that go directly towards results, but I think where we settled on, and I'm hoping the board agrees with, is what we want to see is the incremental amount that we're putting in towards the efforts we're taking for that incremental improvement. So it'd be more directly related to professional development, things like our digital content adoptions this year and the money that we've spent on that, the materials that go along with the digital content. So those are the types of things that we're really looking at on an annual basis, showing you this is the incremental cost of trying to improve the system as it is, rather than the overall system cost. That'll be captured elsewhere in those reports, but when we're trying to categorize between the OEs and the results, that's the filter that we've discussed using for now.
Okay. I just appreciate that this will have more accountability to not only the board, but to the public as well, and will be in a more understandable format so that... Not that big fat stack of papers with numbers all over it. It really doesn't make it easy to understand what's going on. So I too am excited about the kind of reports that we'll get. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll now take a vote to adopt... To the adoption of OE5 as presented.
Oh, no, we have a motion.
I know, I'm just out of whack in our new format. Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks for tolerating me. Okay, so operation... Operational expectations OE5 is in compliance and forward. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have operational expectations OE9, communicating with the public. This is a first reading. And we've had... The board has had a chance to review the superintendent's reasonable interpretation indicators and monitoring. On this operational expectations OE9, communication with the public, is now the board's responsibility to consider the report as evidence of reasonable organizational compliance in this area. So I'm going to call on Dr. Stich to give us a report on OE9.
As a first reading, we discussed this in workshop, but since it's the first time it's really been before the public, since a lot of the public doesn't come to our workshops, I'll spend a little bit more time going through this. And OE9 is titled "Communicating with the Public." The overall statement of this policy says, "The superintendent shall ensure that the public is adequately informed about the condition and direction of the district." So in the original interpretations, I provided definitions of the public, adequately informed condition of the district, and direction of the district. I mentioned that the board views its role as representatives of the community in providing direction to the school district. As representatives, it is important for the board to have regular dialogue with the constituents they represent. Foundational to any dialogue is common understanding. Therefore, the board requires the superintendent to provide accurate and up-to-date information to the community, as well as create opportunities for feedback and dialogue from the community. So there's four sections to this policy. The first section requires that the superintendent will assure that timely flow of information, appropriate input, and strategic two-way communications between the district and the public that builds understanding and supports for district efforts. Within this, what I looked at was, anytime we have any significant initiative or significant change to the district, that we not only communicate out, but we create opportunities for that two-way dialogue or communication and feedback from the different constituents that are impacted by that. So from a measurement standpoint, annually, we should be anticipating what those are going to be. We should have a communication plan that we execute. So at the end of each year, we should be able to provide the board with the communication plan from the previous year, along with evidence of how we carried out that communication plan. And it would be amended if any surprise issues come up during the year that we end up having to... That we would consider significant, how we dealt with communications on those. Additionally, we are anticipating initiating a new community survey annually. And to get feedback from the general community and parents on this issue, we've added two prompts that we're going to put into the survey. One will be, "Evergreen Public Schools effectively gets parents and the community involved with education," and we'll have a continuum of responses on that, from disagree to strongly disagree to strongly agree. The second would be, "Evergreen Public Schools effectively considers input from the community when making decisions about large-scale changes." And once we set a baseline, we'll set goals, annual goals, for what that threshold is that the community would either strongly agree or agree with those two statements that would be part of the measurement that you would hold me accountable for. 9.2, "The superintendent will assure that the district's successes are shared with the public locally and with other appropriate audiences, both in-state and nationally." With that, we're looking at, in way of evidence, providing the board with examples of success stories in the past year that were shared with our local community through a variety of media sources, so we would give you examples of those. Additionally, I originally had in here that we would participate in speaking events, in speaking engagements locally within the state and nationally, to be able to share the good things that are happening in the Evergreen Public Schools. At the board's urging, we have also included hosting special events, as we have different people come here to see. Like with Evergreen High School's inclusion program would be a good example, when we've hosted districts that have visited that, or Hila High School, those types of things. And then additionally, with that community survey, there would be a question specific to that, which would be, "Evergreen Public Schools effectively informs the community about good news from the schools in district." The third component is, "The superintendent will maintain varied district-sponsored information sources that provide information that is clear, pertinent, relevant, timely, and easily accessed." So in this interpretation of the policy, I have defined clear, pertinent, relevant, timely, and easily accessed for the board and the community to see, that will help define my expectations. We'll know we'll... We're looking at compliance from this, when the district has implemented our communication plan again and utilized a variety of communication channels targeted at matching the different types of information in the specific community segments. So again, at the end of the year, we would bring back last year's communication plan, as well as a variety of evidence of how we've carried out that communication plan, for you to be able to verify that we've done what we said we were going to do. With that, there are three questions that would be in the community survey that would give us feedback on this. One is just asking, "Which communication sources are you aware of that EPS offers?" And we would list all the ones and see how many of those families are aware of. "Which communication sources do you use to follow EPS news and happenings?" And the last one, "I am able to access quality and timely information about EPS." Again, that one would be on a strongly disagree to strongly agree scale. The last component of OE9 is 9.4, which talks about, "The superintendent will prepare and publish on behalf of the board an annual progress report to the public that includes the following: data indicating student progress towards accomplishing the board's results policies, information about the school district's strategies, programs, and operations intended to accomplish the board's results policies, and information about the district's financial condition, including reviews of revenues, expenditures, and costs of major programs." So this one will really be, as evidence, the annual report that we will put together, and the board will be able to review that annual report and see that those three key elements are all contained in the annual report and reasonably covered. And that would be the evidence presented. So that's what we have in the way of a district... District expectations for communicating with the public, for me to be able to implement the board's expectations. With that, at this time, I recommend that the board accepts these reasonable interpretation indicators and monitoring report for OE9, communicating with the public, and the reports be moved forward for a second reading and adoption.
I'm... I would like to call for any questions or comments by the audience. Comment on this communication policy? Done. I'd like to call for a motion.
I move that the board accept the superintendent's reasonable interpretation indicators and monitoring report for operational expectations OE9, communicating with the public, as presented for a first reading, and the reports be moved forward for a second reading and adoption.
Second.
Have any questions, comments by the board on this?
My only comment is I think it kind of lays out the... What we've been wanting a long time as far as, you know, just lining out our expectation for communication with, you know, not only internal, but our stakeholders, and having it be... Everything be more transparent.
Yeah, the other thing too that I like is emphasis on being proactive. And I think we do it anyway, but you really clearly state that here. And then another indicator is that one of the questions talks about making sure that we're getting feedback from the community on any large-scale changes. I like that aspect. A question I had, you talked about the community survey. So we already do a community survey, right? So are these questions in addition to the questions that we already do, or will these be in place of the ones we?
Some of these came out of the community survey. We've historically done. What we're considering right now is, we're using Panorama as a student survey and as a staff survey, and we want to take that Panorama survey and use it as a tool for the community survey. So we're looking at lifting some of these questions out of that past community survey and inserting it into the Panorama survey. Because we can customize it, but the issue we run into when we customize the Panorama survey is, any new questions won't have a norm reference across the country with other districts where they administer a similar survey. So we're... And by... But I also don't want to over-survey and do two different surveys. And we think we're going to get much better information long-term out of the new survey, which is why we're looking at moving over. So we will have what that statewide average on some of those questions was in our previous survey that we'll be able to reference to, but that... We'll have an end time where we can have that reference. We won't have that ongoing. So that's one drawback to it.
Got you. So at least in the short term, we'll have that consistency on some of the questions where we'll be able to see how we're doing.
Yes.
Trending. I just had a real minor correction. I guess on 9.3, that second question, "Which communication sources do you use?" Or I guess you want to say, "Do you use?" Right, instead of "to."
Okay, yes. Correct, that was a typo. Go into the master and fix that right now.
I noticed that as indicators of compliance for each of these, you're saying that survey responses are compliant when they indicate a majority of respondents agree with these statements. That'd be like, "agree" and "strongly agree," and you're looking for a 50% plus one as an indicator of compliance?
Now, that's a discussion point we're going to have to have. That's why we didn't put in the percentage in here until we bring it back as a monitoring. So I would anticipate bringing this first to a workshop as a monitoring report and having a discussion on, here's what the survey results are, and what does the board see as an acceptable level.
Well, I ask because that's your indicator of compliance. And then you did leave the blank under the evidence of compliance. It might be... Might be good to extend that blank if we're going to have a discussion as we get through our first year into the indicator, so that you're not binding yourself to something specific that's right now an unknown. Because I think this is the first operational expectation that has a really large factor in it that you don't directly control, and that's public opinion, which could be influenced by any number of other things that are going around, the weather.
Which is why the term "reasonable" will keep popping up.
Yeah. I think we can promise to stay reasonable about that. What was the other?
Yeah, I like that approach.
Those were my two comments, is that I'd hate... It's going to be something that we have to stay flexible on.
Right.
When we evaluate the superintendent for this, because of the degree of variability and control that we have over.
I totally agree that we'll have to be somewhat flexible, but I really like the approach of being more disciplined, I guess, about measuring and then using the results as indicators. So I like that direction.
One of my other questions has to do with OE's. Let's see, 9.3, where we're talking about communication sources that EPS offers. Are you thinking of disaggregating that kind of thing and trying to capture individual school communication efforts as well?
We could disaggregate this by school very easily and see by... Is that what you're asking?
No, I'm not asking...
Which school uses which type predominantly?
Initially, I'm not really asking whether you will, you know, change this to do it, but one of the problems of communication that I've observed over the years is that there are things the schools struggle with. It's just a matter of manpower and getting the word out. And the formats that those take are variable, depending on the school and depending on ability or desire of the people at the school to communicate.
And we are working with schools right now to update their websites and their Facebook pages to where we can create a better Facebook presence from all of our school sites.
My question was, had you incorporated that into this, or is that a future item?
That's a future item. That would be... To me, that would be more of a... That wouldn't be the board threshold on the monitoring report. That's an analysis that we're going to be able to do internally to see how we can improve to get those overall numbers up.
If...
But I wouldn't anticipate us getting into that level of detail in what we would present back to you.
If communication is an overarching goal and part of our results policies, we would probably expect that at the school level, it would be, as part of school improvement plans, how they communicate out to their families. I would expect that that would probably be part of it, because that's sometimes where we can ask those questions on how they're communicating out.
Not something I thought of, but yeah, I think you're right. Place to touch on that base.
So just to confirm then, it sounds like your intent, John, is, when you talk about results, it's aggregated as a district, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I thought, too.
Well, I'm encouraged that having a more directed approach to this from a board's perspective, because communication is always one of the hardest things in an organization, because there's so many moving parts and things going on. And so the more we can kind of keep... Trying to keep working at it, and I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this, because I know it's not easy. So that's good. Okay, so we will now take a vote to accept the reports as presented and move forward to a second reading and adoption. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? OE9, communicating with the public, will be brought back for second reading on October 24th for a vote and adoption. That's good. Okay, next up is the board consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the board consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we move to the superintendent's consent agenda. For approval of...
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Have superintendent's... Have a superintendent's report.
So I was excited to be able to tweet out last Friday a picture of two signed documents on my desk that was the purchase order for the remaining 13,000 student devices for the Acer Chromebooks. And checking with, Derek's back there clapping.
I know, we all are. Woo-hoo.
So checking with Derek earlier today, we anticipate shipping to start hopefully within the next two weeks. And we will pin down near the end of this week exactly what that shipment schedule looks like, and start working with schools on scheduling what the deployment dates are going to be at all of our secondary schools. And then from that, we can domino the existing devices that get moved from the secondaries down to the elementaries. We can figure out what those elementary anticipated delivery dates are. So this has been a long time coming. It's very comforting to know we've got over 1,000 of those devices out in our environment and have had for over a month now, and they're working well. We're confident that the new ones that are going to come in are going to work just as well. And we're ready to move forward, knock on wood, without any hiccups. Last week, I was really excited to be able to go to Hila and watch the immortal life of Henry Adelax with several Hila students and members of our community. Even more excited to share that thanks to the Fort Vancouver Regional Library Association, they are bringing Rebecca Sklute to town in, what was the date, Todd?
November 8th.
November 8th.
Wednesday, November 8th.
So right now, there's no guarantee we can make anything work out, but I'm going to try to get into some conversations and hopefully have her at least drop by and visit the school. It'd be really exciting to have the author of the book visit the school that was named after Henry Adelax. Want to remind everybody, we have an honored citizens tour coming up this Thursday. And yesterday, I had the opportunity to join Paul Harris with a visit at Harmony Elementary School. He was looking at our before and after-school childcare partnership with the ESD. Was very excited about that and supporting that in Olympia in the upcoming session and trying to figure out what he could do to get everybody else to have programs similar to what we have been able to create now with the ESD, with partnerships that are educationally-based childcare for families. And the last thing I have to share is relative to our potential bond coming up, we have a survey that went out starting yesterday over the phone systems. So we are in the process of collecting, I believe, 400 responses to that survey. We anticipate it being done sometime tomorrow. And as long as it's done tomorrow, we will be opening up that same survey to the general community online on Thursday, and publicizing that out, and hoping to get feedback from staff, students, parents, general community on our current draft proposal of what a bond measure would look like, so that we can bring that back in workshop at our next meeting, and share that with the board, come up with a recommendation for what our resolution would be in November. So things are chugging right along and right on track. I have a, I have a meeting with our leadership group next Wednesday, the 18th, to share with them the results of the community survey and what we're thinking of, so they're aware of what we're going to be bringing to the board for discussion. And they can start thinking about how to help educate the community as to the potential benefits and impacts of such a measure. What I've got for tonight.
Next, we have comments by the board.
Well, we had our first annual Evergreen Citizens for Schools golf tournament, and despite the two torrential downpours that we survived, I think everyone had a great time. I don't think my team won, because when I got done, everybody was long gone. So I'm not sure what that meant, but it was a lot of fun. I really enjoyed that day, despite the two rainstorms. Oh, and the foundation is having a planning meeting for next year, next week. So they're having kind of their board annual planning meeting.
Yeah, I guess I'll just say how excited I am. John already mentioned about Rebecca Sklute coming, you know, for that annual Authors and Illustrators Dinner on November 8th. And yeah, I really hope that there's some way that the district, the school district, can work with the library district to be able to, you know, have some sort of visit or student experience, because I think it's a great opportunity.
I want to let you talk about the early learning.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, the three of us, were you there, Julie? I can't remember. There's no, Todd and Victoria and I visited with the Park Crest Early Childhood Center, which is a joint. It's operated by the service district, ESD 112, showing us a joint effort to include federally-funded, state-funded, and privately-funded children in an early learning center. They're about 90 kids, and it's a new facility, and a program opened this year. I was impressed by what I saw there. They were like many kindergartens. It seemed like they were focused on teaching and nurturing to the youngest age. And, but I thought the babies were cute, too.
They were. No, I loved that baby room.
And it is neat to see and talk to preschoolers and see what they're doing. And it looks like a really promising model for early childhood education.
It was fun. Those little ones, they were just so cute. And it was impressive how, no matter how young they were, they had learning going on. And the little first level of toddlers, so they're like 18 months-ish, they were busy working with leaves and identifying the colors. And, I mean, they were actively engaged. It was really neat to see. So it's exciting as they track these kids and see how did they enter into kindergarten more prepared. So I think it's a really worthy cause, and it was a fun place to stay for a little while.
Yeah, that really did take me back, a back, because I didn't realize the age of these kids. And when you go into a room and they're like really young, I mean, pre-walking or whatever, right? So it's like, wow, this, you know, this center is serving a real, quite a range of ages, but a real important age to be able to reach kids.
And even though the kindergarten chairs are small, they're really small at this school. They're like this. They're tiny. It was so cute.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was fun. I had the opportunity to join John yesterday when Representative Harris was here. And what was striking to me about that is, I guess sometimes I'm just more involved in our school, and I don't really know what's going on in every other district. But the folks that were there to tour, and the fact that we have childcare before and after-school in every one of our elementary schools, they were just really astounded that we've been able to do that. And the partnership we have with the ESD is really a powerful one. And they, they think this is a model for before and after-school care that other districts should try and emulate. So that was, I just assume we just, everybody does what we do, and that's that. But it was, it was a nice, nice visit. Yeah. Okay? All, I think? Now's the time on the agenda for citizens who wish to speak to the school board.
Agenda items?
Oh, did I miss one? I'm sorry. I surely did. Have any future agenda items that we'd like to present? Okay, good. Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, now's time for citizen comments. This is a time where a citizen may address the board about issues that are not, were not on the agenda. It may not be legal or personnel in nature. And we ask that you come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. So I see one person has signed up. Heather, is it? Okay, Heather, come on up.
Yeah. So Heather Senate and 15413 Northeast 47th Circle.
So why don't you share with us what you'd like us to know about tonight?
So I'm here today to call attention to an issue that's currently impacting the students of the Evergreen School District. It's recently come to my attention that the Evergreen Public School District does not have a district-wide school dress code policy. The individual schools are each, each establish their own dress code. And these dress codes disproportionately burden our female students. Some of the most powerful and lasting ideas about the world around us, we learn at school. We learn that hard work pays off, success comes from working, girls' bodies are distracting, and that harassment is inevitable. This might sound inflammatory, but it's not an exaggeration. It's the overriding message being sent to our students. The dress code sets the tone for the atmosphere of the school, and deciding if an article of clothing is appropriate is completely subjective. I, myself, am currently violating the Cascade Middle School Dress Code. My undergarments are shown, and my side fabric is gaping. When a girl is punished for an article of clothing, we're sending a message to her that her clothing choice is more important than her education. We're giving her, if we send her home, she waits for a parent to bring a change of clothing, or she's given something to cover up with, she must bear the weight of the embarrassment and shame resulting from a subjective construct of our society. I recently reviewed the dress codes from all of the schools around the district, and what I found was concerning. These dress codes use words such as skimpy, revealing, distracting, inappropriate, provocative, and poor taste when describing female clothes only. I can't help but feel there's a powerful irony in accusing a girl of being provocative in projecting that societal assumption onto her adolescent body before she's even old enough to have learned how to correctly spell the word. The reason I'm here today is because two of my dear friends have had five and six-year, their five and six-year-olds told to cover up at school, one of which who didn't want to return to school after the incident because she was so embarrassed by what happened. This sends an incredibly powerful message to our students. It teaches our childrens that girls' bodies are dangerous, powerful, and sexualized, and that boys are biologically programmed to objectify and harass them. It prepares them for college life, where as many as one in five women is sexually assaulted, but society will blame them, question them, and silence them, where the perpetrators are rarely disciplined. The problem is often compounded by a lack of any attempt to discipline boys for harassing behavior, which drives home the message that it is the victim's responsibility to prevent it. Meanwhile, the very act of teachers calling young girls out for their attire projects an adult's sexual perception onto an outfit or body part that the girl herself may have never even thought of. At this point, it starts to feel like such codes are less about protecting children and more about protecting strict social norms and hierarchies that refuse to tolerate differences and diversity. A recent study by Stanford University found that schools that have changed their dress codes to only include safety measures have seen an increase in female achievement scores and no change in male achievement scores. So today, I urge the Evergreen Public School Board to evaluate the status of our dress codes. I urge you to create a district-wide policy that does not oppress women, encourages students to make their own decisions about their dress and grooming standards, and encourages a policy where staff, educators, and students are required to manage their own personal distractions.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to address So at this point, we will go into recess where, and to sign documents, then we will reconvene in a board workshop where we'll have a meeting debrief, a linkage and communication committee report, legislative update, superintendent update. Thank you for joining us tonight.